Welcome to the regularly scheduled public meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of Shreveport, Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. When you come forward, please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order, and first hear the MPC staff case manager, then from the applicant and those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative of the application can speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at (318) 673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcattlempc.com. All ZBA board decisions on cases within the city limits of Shreveport are subject to appeal to District Court. All ZBA decisions on parish cases are subject to appeal to parish commission. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact either District Court or the Parish Administrator's Office about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the empty way to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off your cell phones while the ZBA is in session. The Zoning Board of Appeals values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines.
Can we get approval of the last minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, who's?
Take him.
Okay. It's been moved and second by Mr. Farrell. That means be approved and let's vote. All right, motion carries. Our first case is case number 20-13-BAC, Margaret Gilbert.
Good afternoon. My name is Jake Pallow. I'm with the Shreveport Metropolitan Planning Commission. This is case 2013-BAC. The applicant is Margaret Gilbert, as well as the property owner. This is with regards to 701 Dudley Drive. If you could go to Exhibit A, please. The applicant is requesting a variance to the minimum lot size, or the minimum lot width, for a single-family dwelling within an R3 multifamily residential district. She wishes to subdivide her property and then sell two different lots. There is an existing house on the entirety of her property, as well as a driveway she wishes to subdivide. The driveway and the house onto one lot, and then the vacant portion of her property onto a separate lot. The vacant lot being created is only 48.75 feet wide. According to Section 4.2 of the Unified Development Code, the minimum lot width allowed in an R3 district to accommodate a single-family house is 50 feet. Thus, the applicant requires a 1.25-foot lot width variance. If you could go to Exhibit C, please. There is an existing set of stairs as well on the east side of the house, which encroaches 2.7 feet into a five-foot interior side yard setback of the new lot being created. Due to the way the property is being subdivided, she needs a setback variance as well for the stairs. Stairs have to be at least five feet from the interior side yard property line. If you could go to the zoning map. The property in question is zoned R3, as previously stated. It is surrounded by R3. R3 is multifamily residential. However, most of the houses in this area are single-family residences. There is R17, single-family residential, further north. However, the immediate property surrounding it are R3. Now, go back to Exhibit A. So, the applicant requires a variance to the minimum lot width due to the existing house on the property. She would have to move the property line closer to the house in order to not get a minimum lot width variance. However, that would require a greater variance to the stairs. The lot width in this case deviates by 2.5% from the UDC requirement. Thus, this variance is not really anticipated to create a negative impact on the surrounding area. The only impact is the maximum width of the house that could be put on this lot would be slightly smaller than that of other lots in the area. The setback variance for the stairs was not explicitly requested by the applicant. The need for this variance was discovered upon review of this survey. The stairs are closer than what's permitted by the UDC. There's also a pathway, if you go back to C. There is a pathway in between the stairs and the property line. There is no setback requirement for pathways. So, even if the stairs weren't there, there would still be activity within that five-foot setback. So, the fact that it's encroaching on this requirement doesn't really have any impact on the surrounding area as well. Based on the information in the application, the variance of 1.25 feet is warranted for the minimum lot width, and the variance of 2.7 feet is warranted for the stairs within the interior side setback. There is an existing condition to the property, which is the structure, and then it will not have a significant impact on the surrounding area. Alternatively, you can deny the variance, either one, or you can approve a lesser variance to the lot width, which would require a greater variance to the setback, because you're pushing the property line closer to the stairs now if you have a lesser lot width variance and vice versa. Any questions? Yes.
Okay, Jake. So, this is the west side of the house, correct?
That would be the east side of the house.
That is the west?
Actually, that is the west side, correct. Okay.
It's the east side that we're asking for.
Yes, the east side. My mistake.
Okay, so that's not the staircase that's in question, then?
And you go to the other picture? Yeah, that was my mistake. Yeah, that would be the staircase. That was my bad. But yeah, the steps encroach into the setback in this case.
That answers my question. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jake. Is anyone speaking for case number 20-13-BAC?
I'm Margaret Gilbert. I represent our father's estate for this property.
Could you state your address for us, ma'am?
Pardon?
You state your address, please.
My address?
Yes.
I'm at 9419 Redrick Drive, Shreveport. The house that is on the east side of my father's home, our neighbor, his lot is 42 inches, excuse me, 42 feet wide. I know that the standard is 50 inches for this area, but it is 42 feet is his exact width of his lot. So, it is eight feet off of what is required for this area. And we're just asking for basically two feet approximately, just short of what the requirements are to build in this neighborhood. So, I'm hoping you will take that into consideration. But I just wanted to make y'all aware of that. His address is, it's 711 Dudley Drive, if you need to confirm that. It's owned by Mr. Ed Rafferty.
Excuse me, you said that's the property to your east?
No, he is on the west side.
West side, okay, yeah.
His lot is 42 feet wide. The property on the west side of us is actually 52 feet wide. They're all just a little bit off. Initially, this property that we were on covered three lots, which was 150 feet. Over time, my father gave, just kind of donated to the east property about a foot and a half to widen their driveway, and I'm talking about back in the 1970s probably. And no money exchanged. He just said, "Here, you can just have a couple of feet of our yard, since we have so much." And that's why that one lot is somewhat short of what it should be. And it's just remained that way ever since.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
Any questions from the board?
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is anyone else speaking for case number 20-13-BAC? Is anyone speaking against case number 20-13-BAC? Okay, there are none, what do I hear?
Move to approve.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and second. Let's cast a vote.
I have a blank screen.
Can you touch it?
Oh, there we go. Thanks.
All right, motion carries. Next case, case number 20-16-BAC, Acadiana Lighting and Signs LLC.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ben Moller. I'm here with the Planning Commission. This is case 20-16-BAC. The applicant is Acadiana Lighting and Signs LLC. The owner is McDonald's Real Estate Company. The applicant is requesting a variance to sign type and area for a pole sign in a C2, which is corridor commercial zoning. There is one prior case with the site back in 2007, which was an approval for the restaurant with drive-through for the current occupant, McDonald's. The applicant's proposing to install a new electronic display on an existing pole sign for the existing McDonald's restaurant with drive-through. The display will not change the overall height of the sign, but will increase the sign area. Currently, the sign utilizes a message board that must physically be changed to display messages. And if you don't mind showing us the sign. Thank you, sir. So, this is the rendering that they did provide to our office for the sign. Currently, the pole signs are no longer allowed in a C2-zoned district under the UDC as per Table 9.3. Therefore, that is why they're requesting their variance for today. The sign is currently comprised of approximately 93.4 square feet of the M logo portion of the sign, with an additional 24 square feet of message board to equal 117 square feet of sign area. The proposed sign, new sign, will retain the original height of 18 feet, but will increase the message area to become eight by three feet, sorry, eight feet, three inches by four feet, five inches, for a total of 129.8 square feet, which combined with the existing logo, which is 81.4 square feet, larger than the 48 square foot maximum allowed for the district. Overall, this will be a 10.2 increase in the existing non-conforming sign. When looking at things, when it does come to variances, our office does look at things like impacts of hardship, impacts, things like that, or impacts to the area. We did come to the conclusion that when looking at the area, there was no determination of no negative impact, or no negative hardship on the area. I apologize. No hardship is determined to exist that would warrant the approval of this variance. There are no visual obstructions to the existing signs, such as trees or forward-sitting buildings that would obscure visibility of the sign when approaching from any direction. While the applicant has stated that the change in sign type from a static pole sign to an electronic message board will be keeping in with the national branding standards of the McDonald's Corporation, this does not constitute an existing hardship, as the yellow M branding does work to draw customers to the site rather than the updated message board. In regards to the impact on the area, the area that it does find itself in is a large commercial corridor with multiple existing sign poles, the site in question being shorter than many of the surrounding businesses. The applicant has stated that should they get the variance approved, the sign plans to follow the brightness requirements set forth by the Shreveport UDC, and does not intend on impacting driver visibility. Because of all of this, we have concluded the denial of the variance for the requested sign type and area is warranted due to the lack of hardship that would require a variance. Alternatively, based on public comment, you may approve the sign variance, or you may approve the variance request with a lesser sign area. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, just to be clear, these photographs are actually of this site today?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moller.
Thank you.
Is anyone speaking for case number 20-16-BAC?
That would be me. Hi, I'm Renee Peterson. I'm the general manager of our organization, McDonald's Project Manager. So...
Could you give us your address, please, ma'am?
I'm sorry?
Your address, please.
444 Carnation Drive, Jennings, Louisiana.
Thank you.
So, this restaurant sits back from the main highway, substantial amount of distance, and the sign that is there now is barely legible from most passerby's. So, we feel that a larger sign would definitely benefit our advertising campaigns and that sort of thing. And I understand from these digital marquees that a lot of the, I guess, the detriment to having them is that a lot of people put flashing messages and that sort of thing that distracts passing drivers, and this would be something we would not do. And also, we would, you know, make sure to have the lights dim enough to where it also does not distract drivers. Do you have any questions for me?
I guess just a comment. I think the issue is less for us, the message board, than it is the granting of variance to a non-conforming sign, considering that our UDC now prohibits pole signs. You know, as a community, we're trying to go to monument signs. And so, I think that that's really what we're considering today is if we want to, because once we allow this, the only way we get rid of pole signs is through natural disaster or, you know, the owners elect to take them down. If they get knocked down, they can't be put back. So, updating them doesn't help us update our codes in our city. I think that's what, really what we're considering today. I guess my other question was, you know, the message board, is it like a flat-screen TV in that they come in standard sizes? Or are they modular and you can accommodate different size? I know in the next case, it's a slightly different dimensions. Are these custom-made, or are they off, like, pull off the shelf the size you want? How does that work for these signs?
Yeah, they're made to order, but they have two or three different options. It's just that they're so expensive...
Right.
...that, you know, when you purchase one a little smaller, it's not much more to go the next level up. And we've spent a lot of money reinvesting in our restaurant, both here and the next one, I think is going to come up too. But, you know, we would just like to get the most bang for the buck, and we don't feel that it's going to create a hardship on driver seeing, you know, you know, keeping their eyes on the road, whatever.
Our ultimate goal as a community is to eliminate sign clutter, and that's why, you know, we've adopted the UDC that encourages and encourages monument signs to eliminate some of the tall pole signs that we've had in the past. And so, our job is to implement that, and this is the only opportunities we have to do that, is when either they get destroyed, or elected to take down, or, you know, that's why there's really no mechanism to update them without coming before us, because it's our only chance to remedy a situation. Just so you understand what we're contemplating up here.
I do understand.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone else speaking for case number 20-16-BAC? Anyone speaking against case number 20-16-BAC? Do I hear motion?
I move to deny.
All right, second.
All second.
It's been moved by Ms. Peterson, and second by Mr. Berry.
Wait a minute.
What?
I think my vote was wrong.
A yes vote is to deny.
Right.
That's what I meant.
Can she recast her vote? All right, vote again. All right, motion carries. Next case, case number 20-3-BAP, Acadiana Lighting and Signs LLC.
Hello again, everybody. My name is Ben Moller. This is case 20-3-BAP. The applicant is Acadiana Lighting and Signs. The owner is McDonald's Real Estate Company. The applicant is requesting a variance to sign type and area for a pole sign in a neighborhood commercial, which is C1 zoning district. There are no prior cases with the site. The applicant is proposing to install a new electronic display on an existing pole sign for an existing McDonald's restaurant with drive-through facility. The display will not change the overall height of the sign, but will increase the sign area. Currently, the sign utilizes a message board that must physically be changed to display messages. Pole signs are no longer allowed in C1 districts under the UDC as per Table 9.3. The existing sign on site is comprised of approximately, and actually, do you mind going to the new rendering? The existing sign on site is comprised of approximately 185 square feet of the M logo portion of the sign, with an additional 24 square feet of message board to equal 209 square feet of sign area. The sign will be retaining the original height of 38 feet, but will increase the message area to 10 feet by three, 10 feet, three inches by five feet, five inches, for a total of 241 square feet, which is 193 square feet, larger than the 48 square foot maximum for the district. Overall, this will be a 15% increase to the existing non-conforming sign. Again, while looking at things, when it comes to variances, we do look at hardship as well as impact in the area. The only hardship that we could find, and if you mind going back to the map for this one, was along Old Mooring Sport Road right here, there is a grove of trees that does block the existing message board on the sign. But we did find that the M logo that is on top of the sign does advertise the McDonald's better than I think the message board would for passerby's. While they might not be able to see exactly what is on the message board, they will know that they are passing a McDonald's with enough time to be able to turn into the restaurant. Because of this, we do feel that they are, since they are still advertising as a McDonald's restaurant, this does not constitute a hardship that would allow for the variance to be approved. When it does come to the impact for the area, going up and down the area from the street, there are plenty of restaurants that are utilizing existing pole signs. Examples would be Wendy's, Taco Bell's, X Bees, and Sonic, all up and down that strip of road. Similarly, if the variance is approved, McDonald's does promise to be keeping to the brightness standards as set forth by the UDC. Based on all of this information, we have concluded the denial of the variance request of sign type and area is warranted due to the lack of existing hardship. Alternatively, based on information provided by the public meeting, you may approve the variance request, or you may approve the variance request with a lesser sign area, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Moller.
Thank you.
Is anyone speaking for case number 20-3-BAC?
Hi, Renee Peterson. So, this...
Excuse me, ma'am. Can you state your name and address over again for us of this case?
Yes, Renee Peterson, 444 Carnation Drive, Jennings, Louisiana.
Thank you.
Okay, so this particular road sign is further, the actual pole is much further back from some of our competitors, like, for example, Popeyes, about a block away from us is substantially closer to the road, to Highway 1 in front of the restaurant. So, we're sitting back a pretty good way. So, there's really no way for people passing on Highway 1 to notice the message or any kind of promotional things that we have going on, on the sign. And by having a bigger digital marquee, you know, it'd be easier for them to read. And it's also, it's a beautiful sign. I mean, it'll beautify the neighborhood. It's very clear, very, very pretty, very nice.
Is it further off the roadway because of a service road, or just the...
No, there's no service road, sir. It's just, it's bad, I don't know why. I mean, I went in front of it today, and I'm like, in line. There's a few in line with us, but several other signs are further, are closer to the road, and for sure, Popeyes is much closer. And there's other competitors. There's a bank down the road that has a large digital sign like we planned to put.
I'm assuming it's because of the power line.
Yeah, and there's also a power pole, like, right next to our...
Between you and the road, yeah?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the board?
I have a question. I think it was asked earlier, this size that you have of your sign, is there any problem where you can't make it any smaller, or it has to be that particular size only?
No, it could be smaller. I think they also come in four by 10, or four by eight.
All right, that's my question.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Why are you guys just absolutely not going to consider a monument sign?
Well, the monument sign, I mean, the pole sign, to be honest with you, we're in the process of replacing 16 pole signs knocked out by Hurricane Laura and Hurricane Delta. So, those signs cost anywhere from like $45,000 to $75,000, whether, you know, depending, well, 25 to 75, depending on whether it needs a new pole or not. So, I mean, they're very expensive. It's very expensive to change the sign. But we would like to be able to have advertisement to draw consumers in, you know, like if we have a two-for-a-dollar hamburger sale or something, we'd like to put it out there that, you know, this is what's going on at McDonald's.
Any other question?
And the branding, I'm sorry, and the branding also, you know, this is McDonald's standards now, is to have these digital marquees on the sign.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I don't want Ms. Peterson to think that we're un-hospitable in North Louisiana. We want to truly welcome her to North Louisiana from Jennings. The situation is, we are well aware that McDonald's has prototypes for monument signs, and we think that they're quite attractive, because with the monument signs, they also do wonderful landscaping to make the McDonald's physical plant look even better than it ordinarily looks. So, I think the question was, because we don't want you not to be able to advertise, I know you're not McDonald's, you're a sign company. We don't want McDonald's not to be able to advertise, but I think that the question is, can McDonald's, because this will start, McDonald's will be a, will start a process in these two areas that will continue. Will McDonald's not be able to commit to a monument sign to allow Acadiana to just install a monument sign instead of a pole sign?
Gosh, it would be hard for us to want to do that, and I am with McDonald's.
You're with McDonald's?
Yes, sir.
And we looked at monument signs all over the United States yesterday that McDonald's has in other locations. And like Shreveport, like Cattle Parish, the process had to start like this. I mean, you either do it one of two ways. Either the municipality buys all the signs and converts them from pole signs to monument signs, or each time that signs are upgraded, we convert them to monument signs. And I was just... And I, and I was just hoping that, you know, McDonald's is in the mindset of being a corporate, positive corporate citizens to assist us in transitioning through this process. But I did not want you to leave this, this meeting thinking that we're jumping on McDonald's.
Right, I understand.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clark. Anyone else? All right, thank you ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else speaking for case number two zero dash three dash BAP? Anyone speaking against number, case number two zero dash three dash BAP? Get a motion?
I move to deny.
There is second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Ms. Pearson, second by Mr. Berry. Let us vote. Okay, motion carries. That brings us to the end of our public hearing. Given the old business... And the new business?
The business would be the portion of the nomination, nominating committee, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, we are, at this time of year, again, where we need to... I'll pick a nominating committee, Ms. Dunn, Mr. Farrell, and Ms. Peterson. I'm going to be the three members of the nominating committee. By next meeting, if you guys will get together, and we're going to elect officers again for the coming year. I think Mr. Farrell and Ms. Peterson have a little experience in doing that, so. All right?
Okay.
And any, Mr. Director, you have a report for, sir?
Just, just two quick things, Mr. Chair. I'd like to introduce the zoning board of appeals to the new representative from, representative from the city attorney's office, Ms. Christina Douglas. She is, she will be attending all of your meetings. She will be available in the event that you have questions. She will be able to direct you if you get too far to the left down the line of legality. The previous city attorney was young, like myself, and she decided that she would just retire and not have to come to your meetings. But I just wanted to make sure that Christina is introduced. She's a wonderful person, and she would do wonderful things for our purpose with the zoning board of appeals. I think it's two of you, if I'm not mistaken, and Emily will be reaching out later, that did not take the planning commission training that was offered at the Skybox. Mr. Hahn, you are not here. But the state law requires that if you serve on a planning commission, and we did get an opinion that that does include the zoning board of appeals, that you must take this four hours of training that's provided by the Louisiana chapter of the American Planning Association. We are in the process of trying to work with the City of Bossier. The City of Bossier has seven members that did not take the training. So we are not, by any stretch of the imagination, really blatantly violating the law. But we're working with the City of Bossier and Bossier Parish to have either a live training or a virtual training in November. Once we get that buckled down by the persons that administer the training, we will make you aware of that so that you can take this training. And it's very interesting training, though. You were in the Skybox last year. I think you learned some things that you didn't know. I think it's a very great opportunity, and it's just part of, one of the requirements to serve on this board. Also, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, if you recall, every year in December, we have a employee appreciation social. That employee appreciation social at the council, we did not even want to try to wrestle with trying to find a location that we could ensure social distancing and safety in all respects of the pandemic. We're very hopeful that next year, we will be able to get back to whatever the, the new norm will be. And possibly, this would be one of the things that we will be able to resume next year. I shared with you, I hope that we are planning on continuing the free meetings on Tuesday before your meetings. We're finding that those meetings work extremely well. It gives you an opportunity to ask any questions that you have, gives us an opportunity like yesterday, those of you who were there when we did not have the correct pictures for the McDonald's signs, that we could get those corrected and in your pockets and done properly today. And trying to make sure, and I always like to acknowledge things, that you had pictures of the actual house in the first case. The zoning enforcement department went out and took additional pictures in order to make sure that when Jake was explaining those, those variances and subdivisions, that you would have a clear understanding of what will happen. And we still did not get it correct. But that was my fault, not Jake's fault. And I don't want Jake, we had a discussion just before this meeting, and I was on the side, the wrong side with the wrong steps. So that's why Jake, Jake is very thorough, and Jake does an extremely good job. So I just wanted you to know that Jake was not confused. I contributed to confusing him. But other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, sir. Any public comments? Any comments on the board? All right, this meeting is adjourned. Ms. Pearson?